helps you keep track of the total of what you're doing over weeks and then months.
Yes, it does.
That's great. And you mentioned that when you're doing your strength exercises, how many reps do you try and do?
I try to do at least 10, and then if I've already done 10, I build on that. And each day, I give myself a little bit of gold.
I see. Because if you're doing, if you can't do 10, the weight's probably too high.
That's true.
But if you can do 100, the weight's probably not enough.
Yes.
So you're trying to get in that 10 to 15 range, and where you're doing it with proper form and everything?
Yes.
And this booklet has helped you do all that?
It has. It's made me very motivated.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. Well, do you have any other thoughts that you'd like to share for the viewers at home?
Well, I noticed that my strength is a little, I'm a little bit stronger. I can lift, almost lift my husband, but not quite.
All right, all right.
That'll be my next goal.
That's your next goal? Lift the husband. Okay. Well, you heard it here first on The Empowered Patient. We're lifting husbands, we're living longer, we're living better, and we're calling the Department of Aging to get this booklet that's available free to all of us. We want to hear from you. Give us a call, order the booklet, Exercise and Physical Activity, by calling the number below. Have a wonderful time getting healthy.
Now, I'm with Denise, who is the program manager here at the Wellness Center. Denise, how do seniors take advantage of these amazing facilities? Because these machines really are state-of-the-art.
Well, we accept any senior who is above 50, 50 and older, and there's three types of memberships. There's a regular membership, which is people who are 50 through 59. They pay $40. Then we have a senior membership, which is seniors who are 60 and older. They pay $20. And then we have the Wellness Club members who pay $10, and they have access to the gym, activities that we plan, and they have access to the computer classes.
Okay. And do they also have their health monitored during a period of time if they belong to the Wellness Club?
Yes, we have two fitness monitors. We have one in the morning from 9 to 1, and then another one from 3 to 7. We're always onsite watching them.
So they can get advice about how to use the machinery, because that's really important, that they're using the machinery in the correct way to get the most out of it. So they have somebody here who will-
Yes, we do.
-help them come and get?
Yes, and they will show them how to use all the machines and make sure that they are comfortable using them by themselves.
And do they, can they have a program for them, customized program?
Yes.
This is a really important program for seniors, both for their physical and cognitive health. Tell me, how can low-income seniors take advantage of the program?
We have financial assistance. Where seniors just need to provide the proper documentation, such as bank statements, or proof of income, or Medicare cards, and they will get a reduced fee.
So it really is truly open to anybody-
Yes.
...in the local community, in the Hollywood area?
Yes.
That's great. Denise, thanks so much for spending some time with us today. We're looking forward to learning more about the center after the break.
Before approaching an intersection, so that's why two wrong turns don't make a right turn. Now let's learn about tailgating.
Hey, that's how I got my ticket.
You got a ticket for tailgating? That's not good. That can be really annoying.
Doesn't get you there any faster.
It leaves you no distance to brake.
Which makes it easier to get into a crash.
And it also may increase your insurance premium.
And I hate tailgaters.
Tailgating causes crashes. Back off. Watch the road.
Remember, pets need to prepare for disasters too. Put together an emergency kit with water, a water bowl, food, and any medications they may need. Get the message. Be prepared.
We're here in the Wellness Center with EJ Vasquez, who is a program assistant with Partners in Care. EJ, how did you get involved with this project?
You know, I've always wanted to work with seniors and helping them with wellness in their life, and being involved in the community, giving back, and all sorts of things like that, that have really helped me to gain a lot of access into a different generation, you know, and being able to bring a lot of energy and enthusiasm and just love to the community, so.
So what is it that you have learned from working with Partners in Care that you're actually bringing to the center here?
You know, I've learned a lot of that giving back to the community isn't about ourselves. It has nothing to do with you. All it is, is serving them, you know, giving them hope for the next day. A lot of the times, the seniors, you know, are happy to just wake up and be able to come to the center and be able to say, you know, "It was a great day because I did wake up, and I'm here, and I'm ready to go. I'm ready to have fun and exercise and do whatever activity we're doing for the day."
Is this the first time you've been involved in an environment like this, this Wellness Center?
It is. It is actually my first time. So it's been a pretty great experience.
And what type of activities have you started, or will you be implementing in the next few weeks?
Actually, we are doing an evidence-based program for arthritis exercise classes. And we're going to be doing that as well as working with brain activities to stimulate their mind and get them just recharged for the day, and being excited about, about life.
So it's physical and cognitive?
Exactly, yes.
Excellent. So now, I understand you have done the Brain Game here today, so we'll take a look at that.
For sure.
I had a go at it, and I scored badly. So maybe you can give me some tips on what I need to do to improve my cognitive awareness. So let's have a look at the Brain Game.
And what I'm gonna do is go ahead and call whoever's hand I see first, and I'm gonna call on you, and you give me the answer. And then I want you, if you get it right, I want you to write a line on your paper, okay? Just write a little tally mark, so I know that you got a point. And at the very end, whoever gets the most points from the questions and activities that we do will win this awesome blue bag full of goodies. Yes, that's right. Okay? Passengers on an unthinkable luxury liner wine and dine. Shake the- And consider before disaster hits, it starred Leonardo DiCaprio and Kate Winslet. I saw, I saw hers. Let me see the hand. Titanic, is it? Yay! Okay, very nice, very nice. Okay, now we're gonna talk about the animal kingdom. All right, let's see here. When Dorothy landed in Oz, this pet was all she had from home.
Dog.
Dog. Um, let's see. Toto the dog. You got it. All right, go ahead and mark a tally. In dice, what are snake eyes?
One.
Let's see. One dot on each dice. Very nice, very nice. How many dwarves did Snow White find in the woods?
Seven.
Seven dwarves. Let's see. Can you name them?
I don't know.
No, no. Can you name the dwarf?
Oh, name the dwarfs?
Yeah.
Is that extra credit?
Yeah. It would be an extra point if you get it on.
Is that right?
Yeah.
It's smiley?
No. It's not. I'm sorry. No, no. I'll show you, I'll show you. All right, seven. Sneezy, dopey, dark, bashful, grumpy, sleepy, happy.
Happy.
All right, no. It's good, it's good though, it's good though. No, because I can be smiley, but I can be miserable. Sightseeing. In what city or country would you see these sights? Okay, I'm gonna list the sights. The pyramids. I saw hers again. Egypt. And we have Cairo or Egypt. Very good, very good. Remember, not to call out the answer, else I can't call you. Okay, we're ready. Next question is the Great Wall.
China.
Oh, don't shout it out, but I saw your hand. Okay. Superstitions. Rubbing a rabbit's foot will bring you what?
Luck.
Luck. Good luck. Very good, very good. Go ahead and mark a point. So I want everybody to take a couple seconds, memorize these shapes. Okay? Can everybody see it? Everybody sees the shapes?
Triangle.
Triangle. You got a triangle, and what else do you have there?
Square.
A square. Okay, memorize it. I'm gonna change it. Ready? One, two, three, change. So we're gonna come back to that later. Let me see. You will need a pen and pencil for this game, so everybody has one, right? Okay, and let's go ahead and start. Go ahead and look at these words. And, oh, sorry. I want you to go ahead and look at these words right now, and just try to memorize all the words that you can see. Okay, just go ahead and take a couple seconds to look at those words. All right, and five, four, three, two, one, and, okay. Now write down as many of the words you can remember. Ready, and begin. Go ahead and start writing. Go ahead and start writing the words that you can remember. That's awesome. You're the winner.
He wins.
You are a winner of this awesome blue bag full of great goodness. Yes. No, you had more than her. Well, just take the prize. You're good, you're good, you're good, yeah. All right. It's okay. 11. She counted 11. You still had more. Yeah, all right. Okay, great job, everybody. And that is our activity for today.
That was really fun. As you can see, I scored badly. Now, what exactly do the seniors get from activities such as this? Because obviously, they're to stimulate cognitive awareness. What is it that you can measure from these games?
Exactly. They come in here, at first, they're not really sure of what it is that we're doing. I explain it to them. It's great for them to, again, cognitively being able to take instruction, be with other seniors, be able to play a game, do activities that stimulate their mind, as well as their social life. They come in here, and we explain the game to them. And a lot of the times, they, at first, they'll be a little hesitant to the game, but as you see throughout the time, they're open, they're loud, they're lively, they're shouting out answers, and like, wait, wait, wait. You know, I have to explain to them how it actually is gonna go, but it's great for them overall. The things that we discuss will be, you know, big movies, and they know it. They memorize it, you know, they remember from the past the different things we're doing with words, and it's very stimulating to them, being able to come and even just an activity like a Brain Game, to get their minds going, so.
So with games like this, as they progress over the course of weeks, I guess Wellness Club members can actually be assessed at the start, and maybe further down the program, to see, you know, how they are doing in terms of cognition?
Exactly, exactly. Totally used as a gauge to see where they're at, you know, and over time, you will see improvement with them, because as you know, repetition is huge, you know, especially with the seniors, so.
That's really great. Thank you for that. We'll be right back with more activities from the Wellness Center.
As individuals sign up, we will have them take a fitness test. Some of the baseline testing was being done today. Flexibility, strength, balance. We'll also do blood pressure. We'll do body fat readings. And then at three, six, and nine-month intervals, we will go back and retest to see how well they are doing, probably highlighting some of the Fitness Center, Wellness Center members of the month, and monitoring their progress so that they can be able to see how beneficial the program is to them.
I'm here with Barbara Linsky, the executive director of Hollywood Multipurpose Senior Center, and she's gonna tell us how this great new Wellness Center got off the ground. Barbara.
Thank you. A couple of years ago, unfortunately, the state of California decided not to sponsor the Alzheimer's Daycare Resource Centers. And as a result, we were left with some very valuable space. We got into some discussions with Partners in Care Foundation and the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging, and they came up with the suggestion that we try a pilot project. And it's always been my dream to have a fitness center here at, at the Assistance League's Hollywood Senior Center. So with the help of the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging and Partners in Care Foundation, we were able to develop this pilot program called our Wellness Center. And so today is the day we're having the open house and a mini health fair to introduce the Wellness Center to the seniors in our Hollywood community. We have life, life fitness exercise equipment, but we're also offering the Senior Wellness Club, where active older adults can participate in socially engaging activities and evidence-based programs, and also use the fitness equipment to advance their healthy lifestyles.
Yeah, it's really amazing. I've been looking today and talking with some of the seniors, and obviously, they're very excited to see this really new concept in senior center programming.
The federal government is looking to support more preventative kind of programs that will help keep seniors healthier and in their own homes for as, for as long as possible. So we're endeavoring to do that and to provide more preventative kind of programs, similar to A Matter of Balance, Chronic Disease Self-Management, which are some of the programs offered by Partners in Care. We're also looking to encourage more of the baby boomers to get started earlier. So we're looking to have a, a membership category for 50 to 59-year-olds, so that 60 is the new 40 kind of concept, and encourage those folks to get started earlier, as well as accommodating some of the older adults, the 60, the 70, and 85 and up category.
Yeah, I've been, you know, looking around today, and I was really impressed. I just really can't believe the quality of the facilities here and what's on offer. And I really think I'm gonna come and join up, you know, seriously, I'm gonna-
I have a paper we can sign you right up right now.
Absolutely. I really think I'm gonna encourage other people I work with, you know, we're just down the road here. What a great place to come, you know, and interact with seniors as well. We can come and do that. Enjoy the companionship of the seniors, get some exercise, do some of the cognitive games, this type of thing, and just really be involved in another aspect of this community. So it's a very exciting time, I think, for even us younger baby boomers.
We're trying to do more socially engaging activities to encourage individuals to come in, rather than staying home and sitting alone by themselves, but to participate and to enter here to find and be a friend, to share experiences together. And we also have a computer lab right next door, where people will be able to get on the internet, and we will have computer classes, so that they can be more aware of what's out there in the area of technology, in the field of technology. We did some research before we started, and we visited a number of senior centers in Los Angeles County, and we found that the facilities were packed. And so that said to us, we, you know, there is a need for this kind of programming, and if we build it, they will come. And that was clearly evidenced today. I think we had about 100 people coming to our health fair and open house, and trying out the equipment, and getting ready to sign up to be a part of the Senior Wellness Center.
I think what's encouraging too, you know, everybody was so excited about it, but it seems, whatever their level of income, whether they can afford to pay the full membership or not, they can actually come and take part and use these facilities at a sliding-scale rate. So it's just encouraging that it is inclusive of everybody in the community. That's so great.
We have the great, wonderful support of the Assistance League of Southern California Members. This is the founding chapter for Assistance League, and they're very committed to offering these kinds of programs to the low-income individuals in the community. So we have developed a financial assistance program, where they will help raise some funds to assist low-income individuals, so that everybody will have an opportunity to participate in the Wellness Center, regardless of income.
As always, Barbara, it's a pleasure to be here at Hollywood Center, always at the forefront of programming. We always know, you know, whatever's newest in the game, then it's gonna be happening here at Hollywood. Great friend of the program. We always appreciate your participation. Thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and highlighting our Senior Wellness Center.
Thank you.
Conan, if you want a street name after you, you definitely need to earn it.
He should go to the poverty-stricken areas of LA.
Donate to the hospitals to help people with their hospital bills.
Conan should pay for everyone's parking.
You need to work on your tan, because you're in LA now.
I challenge you to dye your hair black.
Five people from your show versus five people from our UCLA men's basketball team.
What we would like to see is you come back to the Los Angeles River and be the face of our brand-new pilot kayak program.
Yeah, we wanna paint your face on the prow of our kayak. And Gertrude the Great Blue Heron agrees with me, right, Gertrude?
You should get 20,000 of your fans.
Each to volunteer 20 hours.
At nonprofits throughout Los Angeles.
Conan, if you want a street named after you, you need to start helping our teachers.
You need to get in the schools and start working with the kids. Work with the children.
I think you should pick up a trash in the streets.
Build a giant Conan head sculpture that everyone can skate on.
Set up a gondola in LA River and give tours.
You should spend a night on the street with the homeless.
You should get the Field of Los Angeles tattoo.
Volunteer as a Hooper Scooper.
Present a million kids march.
He could donate lots and lots of books to school.
You want it?
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Friday, November 4th, 2011. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chamber, room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. I want to thank all the members who are here on time, council members Coretts, Rosendahl, and Zine. We do have excuses from Councilmember Alakon and Perry, so that means we are awaiting Councilmembers Cardenas, Englander, Weezer, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Reyes, and Wesson, if they will please join us as soon as possible, so we can begin the meeting. In the meantime, I want to welcome all of our guests that are here in our City Council chambers. A pleasure to have you here, as well as our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts these meetings live every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, and then rebroadcast them those same days in the evening. If you're not close to a television, you can always use your computer as well to follow the City Council meetings by logging on to our city's homepage at lacity.org. And if you click on the links to the left side, you can follow along live streaming webcast of our council meetings. Also available for your convenience are our agendas, our meeting schedule, and any of the supporting materials that council members get to read are also available for your convenience as well. You can also use your telephone to listen in to the council meetings, 213-621-CITY. You can call that number, 213-621-CITY, and listen in to any of our committee meetings, as well as our full council meeting. And finally, if you live closer to Van Nuys or San Pedro, we have two remote facilities where you can follow the City Council in our chambers there, or also testify from those chambers. If you wish to give public comment, we're able to watch you and listen from those two areas. So if you live closer and want to save some time and reduce traffic and pollution in the city, just go over to our San Pedro and Van Nuys City Council chambers. We have items that are voted on today that are split into items for public comment, and those for which public hearings have already been held. If you wish to be heard on any of those, please fill out a speaker card in the back or in our remote locations, and we'll be sure to include you in the mix, though all items that have already had a public hearing do not necessarily have a second one in the full council, unless a council member reopens that public hearing. Any item, though, that has not yet had a public hearing will be automatically triggered by a card from the public. And we have a section of the meeting for general comments, which is for items that are not on the agenda, nevertheless, items that are under the city's jurisdiction. And so just fill out a speaker card, put "general comment" in upper right corner, and we will include you. Want to welcome our city attorney to the meeting as well. It's always good to have him there. Just make sure we're abiding by all of our city ordinances and procedures. Thank you to our two city clerks as well for their assistance in our meeting. Again, I want to thank those members who are here, council members Coretts, Rosendahl, and Zine. We are still awaiting a quorum, and it is now 10:05, so council members Cardenas and Englander, Weezer and Krikorian, Labange and Parks, Reyes and Wesson will join us. We'll begin shortly. We have four presentations scheduled today, one from myself, Council District 5, Council District 11, and Council District 14. So we very much look forward to seeing those. After we have the presentations, we'll begin with the formal business of the meeting as well. After that, we have 21 items that we'll be voting on today. All of our agendas are made available to the public three days in advance. Those are posted publicly, as well as available online, and they're here in the council chambers for your convenience as well. The agendas detail the items that we'll be voting on, and all the different items that are before us. As I mentioned before, we do have speaker cards. Those are available in the back, and you can just hand those to the sergeants-at-arms or city staff when you have been able to fill out your information. So with that, we will begin shortly. Thank you for your patience while we wait those council members. We just have council members Coretts and Rosendahl, Wesson and Zine, five members, but we will begin as soon as we have a few more, and we'll begin the meeting. Thank you so much. Thank you, council members Wesson and Englander, who are now here. We are up to six members, still awaiting council members Alakon, Weezer, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, and Reyes. And Mr. Weezer is here as well. My apologies. Just awaiting council members Alakon, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, and Reyes. Mr. Weezer, I understand we have a delegation to like to introduce, so I'd like to recognize Mr. Weezer at the outset to introduce some special guests that we have here in council chambers. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'm happy that there is a Thailand delegation touring Los Angeles to learn and expand commerce. If you could all please stand up. Welcome to the city of Los Angeles. We have with us Mrs. Nuntawon Sakatunaga, Director General of Thailand Department of Export Promotion. Welcome. We also have with us Mr. Vuthi Chai Duanggratana, Deputy Director General of Thailand Department of Export Promotion. Welcome to the city of Los Angeles, sir. We have Mr. Tawi Bong Wychaitit, Advisor to the Thailand Deputy Minister of Commerce. Welcome, sir. Also, Ms. Chantira Vivathrat, Commercial Council CEO, Thai Trade Center of Los Angeles. And we have Mr. Hugo Merida from the Los Angeles Metropolitan Hispanic Chamber of Commerce as their host. Thank you, sir, for inviting our guests and having them visit the city of Los Angeles. We in the city of Los Angeles, as you know, have a long, a large Thailand population, and we love to consider ourselves as one of the most diverse cities in the world. and we love to consider ourselves as one of the most diverse cities in the world. But certainly, us working with you to not only benefit the Thailand people who live in the city of Los Angeles, but to continue that discussion about how to improve the economy, how to learn from one another, is very, very important. So welcome to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer, and sawadikap, sawadikrap. Nice to see you here, and thank you very much for gracing us with your presence. As many folks know, the city of Bangkok is also means the city of angels, and Los Angeles is the city of angels. So both of us together, we have two cities of angels here together. Thank you very much for joining us. Sorry, Mr. Weezer.
They mentioned a few words.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Sir, if Ms. Nuntawon Sakatunaga would like to share a few words, if that is okay, Mr. President.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for the very warm welcome here today. Our visit to Los Angeles this time has two main objectives. First is to promote our film industry at the American Film Festival here in L.A. and to establish trade networks with our friends here in Los Angeles. We believe that Los Angeles and the Hispanic business communities have very high potential and are very important to us, as there are more than 60,000 Thais living here. In short, I'd just like to say that I wish to thank you very much for all of us and their potential, a lot of potential between Thailand and Los Angeles that could be explored, and encouragement should be made for exchange of visits for businesspeople from both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin our presentations. We are short one member still for a quorum, Councilmembers Reyes, Labange, Krikorian, and Alakon, if you please join us, and we'll begin our first presentation, which will be myself.
All right, our first presentation will take place, so we are still waiting the quorum. One more member will have that quorum, as President Garcetti approaches to make the presentation. Mr. Garcetti, a crowd awaits you. A crowd awaits you, Mr. Garcetti. All right, let's hear it for the President of the L.A. City Council, Eric Garcetti. Ladies and gentlemen, for his presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and it gives me great joy to recognize a city employee who is getting the job done here in Los Angeles. Mr. Rosendahl and I, in the past years, have helped host and be a part of some very special ceremonies that highlight local officials and local employees that are helping us keep Hollywood here in Hollywood. And Michael Din, who's here from the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, was named the California On Location Awards 2011 Public Employee of the Year in the city category. Let's give him a round of applause. You say Los Angeles to the world, and you say Hollywood, and I was mentioning Mr. Rosendahl, but in the past years, we were able to go to the COLA Awards and be a part of it. Come on over here, join us. The California On Location Awards, also known as COLA, is the premier awards ceremony that salutes location professionals, production companies, and public employees for professional excellence while working on location in the state of California, something we want to continue to see for years to come. Michael is well-known in the film industry for his ability to handle all tasks with a positive can-do attitude, and if he can find a way to make it happen, he will. Often responding, we know that film shoots are not as carefully planned as they can be. They often have a lot of last-minute requests, and he deals with those from film companies with patience, grace, and aplomb. An example of Michael's dedication and work ethic is the amazing job he did in helping transform part of my own district, present-day Hollywood, where we've bought back the industry that was the defining part of the city for so long. And he helped recreate 1968 Hollywood for a feature film for Paramount Pictures that was shot right by Hollywood &amp; Vine and Quenga, I think, right around that area in the heart of Hollywood. Over the course of a three-day shoot, Michael coordinated the removal of a staggering number of no-parking signs, loading zone signs, and parking meters. Those were the days when we didn't have any of those, but 1968. The ease and the way he expedited this was accomplished in incredible manner, and it promoted one of the productions, New York, sorry, prompted one of the productions, New York producers, to comment, "If I knew pulling this stuff off in L.A. was this easy, I would have done my last three shows here." That is the sort of incentive we want to see, because we know we can do the great things we've been doing around this horseshoe, whether it's Mr. Alakon's work and others of us to reduce business tax for filming, to help plugging in for electricity, to make our city buildings free to shoot in. But it's really when it comes down to a person-to-person relationship between a city worker and a production that we want to be known as the most film-friendly place anywhere in the world, and Michael helped us achieve that this year. We talk a lot about wanting to encourage and keep production in L.A. because it means jobs and it helps our economy, and people like Michael can truly mean the difference between films being made here or somewhere else, jobs here or jobs somewhere else. So, Michael, you're a very deserving recipient of the Public Employee of the Year Award. Thanks for helping to make Los Angeles continue to be the best place to film. I'd like to ask our chair, who's also very familiar with the COLA Awards, but our Chair of Transportation, to say a few words as well, Bill Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl.
Just rather quickly, thank you. You see the energy right behind me? That's the energy that's making things happen here, and that's truly the story, and the more we can do things in the Los Angeles area, be flexible, and great government, people who really make a difference. I know Mr. Krikorian has been a leader on this whole business in Sacramento now here in the council. We want to honor you and thank you and everybody behind you. God bless you. Thank you.
So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, thank you to Michael for making the job get done here, for getting the job done. He's a perfect example of how much can be accomplished with a great attitude, great expertise, and a love of this city and its core industries. Ladies and gentlemen, our Public Employee of the Year for city filming, Michael Din.
Yay, Michael!
Thank you, council. Thank you, thank you to everybody. I would like to acknowledge my supervisor, John Sam and Zaki Mustafa, for letting me have what I need so that I can do my job efficiently and effectively. I'd like to thank the sign posters who goes out at 3:00 in the morning to do their job, the electricians who spends the whole night out on location with film production, trying to figure out a way to do their shots, and meter shops with Ray Lau and Dan Mitchell for removing 40 meters in two days to accommodate a last-minute request from production. Without these guys, it would be impossible for me to do my job. So on their behalf and from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much for this recognition. Thanks.
All right, congratulations to you. Great work for the great city of the angels. Madam Clerk, I think we have 10 members. If we can call the roll, please.
Alakon, Cardenas, Englander, Coretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weston, Zine, Garcetti. 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Very well. First item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendahl, second by Mr. Weston. Okay, next item, please.
Committatory resolutions for approval.
Those are approved, Mr. Parks, Mr. Krikorian. Next item, please.
Items 1 to 1 and 2 are items noted for public hearing.
Number 2 special for Mr. Garcetti. Item 1, we have cards, so call that special also. Next items, please.
Items 3 through 7 are items for which public hearings have been held.
3 through 7, Mr. Rosendahl.
5, 6, and 7 special.
5, 6, and 7 for Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Parks, what, say it again? 3 special for Mr. Parks. And how about number 4? Anybody on number 4? All right, so number 4, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Let's go to now the next items, number 8.
Items 8 through 11 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
All right, do we have cards?
There's cards on item 10.
So 10 special, 9 special for Mr. Rosendahl, 10 special for Card. Remaining items? Colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, item 12 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Number 12, any cards? There was a public hearing on it, but I don't see.
Yes, excuse me, Mr. President. Councilmember Weston wishes to call the item special.
Okay, number 12 special, Mr. Weston. Next item, please.
Item 13 is an item for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
13, Mr. Parks, special. All right, next group, please.
Mr. President, that takes you to presentations or general public comment.
We will continue with our presentations. We do have 14 to 21.
That's on the special meeting agenda, Mr. President.
All right, so we'll come back to that. Let's continue with our presentations. Mr. Rosendahl? Mr. Englander.
I don't know if it was stated earlier if we can have everything forthwith because of the recess. Thank you.
Very well. Everything today will be forthwith. So our next presentation will be with Councilmember Rosendahl? CD 11. With all the yellow shirts I look at. All right. An orderly group, I will acknowledge.
This is the Westchester Wave lacrosse team, folks, and they are winners. Give them a round of applause, you probably even go through anything. And their parents are coming up too and getting in the mix here. We're here to honor the 5th and 6th grade Westchester Wave lacrosse team for their superior accomplishments during the 2011 season. The Westchester lacrosse program originated just four years ago at one of our own Los Angeles Recreation and Park, the Westchester Recreation Center. This program is now the largest lacrosse program in the entire city, as well as the number-one championship program in all of the city. This team accomplished this year alone the undisputed champion in all of the Los Angeles Rec and Park Winter League teams and non-Recreation Park challengers. They went undefeated. Applause for that. This L.A. championship team then went on to honor the city of Los Angeles by expanding their dominance on a regional level during the spring club season. The Westchester Wave went 11 to 1, soundly defeating championship teams from many of the surrounding cities and communities within the county. From there, the Wave went on to the California Stars level, where they once again went undefeated, taking the title this past August in a heated match against the Ventura County Championship Team. Another win for them again. Round of applause. At all times, they have exemplified the character, the poise, and the championship attitude. These accomplishments have not gone unnoticed, and we in the city of Los Angeles are proud of their efforts. And I'd like to bring the coach up to say a couple of quick words, Dan Moller. Come on up, Dan.
Mr. Councilman Rosendahl, before you speak, Dan, we have a number of parents that are over here on the side. I'm sure they want to get a picture of the team. When they finish speaking, we'll have you all come forward, and you can take pictures, okay? So we want to run it out to all the parents, but just hold on, and we'll let you come in there and do it from the right angle. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to briefly thank the city of Los Angeles, and particularly the Westchester Rec Center, for all they've done to support lacrosse. They have been so supportive. Stephen Joyce and his team over there have done a lot to promote lacrosse. Lacrosse is the oldest sport in North America, originally played by the Native American Indians. It is the fastest-growing sport at the high school level in Southern California, so we appreciate that support. It's a fantastic sport. Come out and watch us play at some point. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, congratulations. So why don't we have the folks come in now, and they can gather, take a picture while we do the presentation?
And we have a whole lot of search to give out. We'll give them out in the back, okay?
And gather, there you go, folks, so you can get pictures of your proud students, proud lacrosse members from Westchester. Westchester lacrosse, there we go. I have never seen so many paparazzi other than a movie star. Britney Spears must be close by.
Great, 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 great.
All right.
Hi, Mom.
Congratulations to you all.
Hi, Grandma Suzie.
We're going to go through here, folks, and take a photo. Yeah, that's Scott Carney, another great guy. Give him a round of applause.
Westchester lacrosse. Congratulations once again. Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl. We have one final presentation. Mr. Coretts, you ready? You're not ready yet? All right, we'll move on, and then we'll come back. There's one final presentation. The folks haven't arrived yet, so we will come back to that. Let's do public comment. Madam Clerk, how's that sound? We will now do public comment. Items that are not on the agenda, you have two minutes to speak on public comment, and we will start with Alex Schaefer. Alex Schaefer, followed by Henry Marine. Alex, you here? There he is, okay. And Henry Marine will follow you, sir. Go ahead.
Morning, everyone. Alex Schaefer, dressed in City Council again, kind of the same thing I was bringing up on Tuesday. Just regarding what's going on with Occupy L.A., are you guys going to do something, make some kind of comment? I mean, it's still there. I don't know if you guys have walked around lately. I don't even know if half of the people would recognize your faces if you did, or maybe you could get Hollywood to kind of dress you up in a big outfit or something, and you could sneak around like Marie Antoinette. But it's, you know, I am witnessing firsthand unsafe conditions there. You know, I don't know if you've seen Zuma Dog's video on his website, but obviously the guy has, you know, everybody knows who he is, and he's a very outspoken individual. But the things that he's saying about what's going on in that park being a free speech zone or whatever, the officers aren't doing anything, people are trying, he's made the point, if this is a free speech zone and this is not permitted, then people can go and do anything and say whatever they want, as long as they're not threatening, because it's a free speech zone, free-for-all. And so Zuma Dog is allowed to go onto city steps and start singing the Bee Gees, all right, with his loudspeaker, because they are. And the people that are organizers of whatever this thing is going on right in your backyard, they are controlling speech. He was physically expelled from the park by a crowd of people who did not like what he was saying. So again, how long is this going to go on? When are you guys going to make a comment or do something about it? I am not looking forward to when officers try to go in there and legally get them out to what they're going to be confronting. Thank you.
I thank you. Henry Marine, followed by Arnold Sachs. Again, this is public comment. You have two minutes.
Good morning. Subsequent to me attending a meeting in Mr. Parks's office on September 30th, it was alleged that I was AWOL for that time. And I was deemed insubordinate for refusing to use my time as demanded by GSD personnel. So I need some clarification on this. Responding to a call from a councilman or some committee during business hours is that? Not city business? Everybody else gets paid except me? Is that it? Somebody can come over to the side and give me, clear me up on this matter? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Arnold Sachs, followed by Cheryl Eickley. We will have a representative discuss that with you. Go ahead, Mr.--
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Seems like there's rumors in the newspapers that Frank McCourt is going to be selling the Dodgers, and some people from L.A. have chipped in, including the wonderful Janice Hahn, about who might own the Dodgers, but yet, nobody has mentioned the Saviors at L.A. Live, AEG, or even Ed Roski. Two stadiums are going to be built in L.A. County by two billionaires, and nobody's mentioned either one of them as possible owners for the Dodgers. It's very surprising, because we know how civic-minded both of those gentlemen, well, both the gentlemen and the organizations that they represent are so civic-minded. That being said, an interesting item on your agenda today for the financial report for the fiscal year 2010 and 11. And again, I question, how can you have an accurate fiscal report for the fiscal year 2010 and 11, when the transfer that DWP was going to be making in this fiscal year 2010 and 11, wait, was 2010, yeah, 2010, 11, 2011, 12? We don't know, because the bulk of the transfer was made in February, over $150 million, and then six months of payments at $21 million each. Well, March, April, May, June, that's the end of the fiscal year. So July and August are in a new fiscal year. So how accurate can your fiscal reports be when you have money that's supposed to go into one fiscal year showing up in two fiscal years? Well, that's City Hall accounting, but don't worry, in three more months, we'll be talking about cuts because of the deficit.
Cheryl Eickley, followed by Max Funk, and then Noel Weiss.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Eickley, and I'm a citizen in District Four in Los Angeles. And I don't want to become one of these gadflies of the City Council that speaks all the time, but I'm enjoying the ability to exercise my First Amendment right, and I appreciate you guys extending that to us. I would like to read the Declaration of Occupation of New York, which was a document accepted by the New York City General Assembly on September 29, 2011, and adopted by Occupy Los Angeles. As we gather together in solidarity to express a feeling of mass injustice, we must not lose sight of what brought us together. We write so that all people who feel wronged by the corporate forces of the world can know that we are your allies. As one people united, we acknowledge the reality that the future of the human race requires the cooperation of its members, that our system must protect our rights, and upon corruption of that system, it is up to the individuals to protect their own rights and those rights of their neighbors, that a democratic government derives its power from the people, but corporations do not seek consent to extract wealth from the people and the earth, and that no true democracy is attainable when the process is determined by economic power. We come to you at a time when corporations, which place profit over people, self-interest over justice, and oppression over equality, run our governments. We have peacefully assembled here, as it is our right, to let these facts be known. They have taken our houses through an illegal foreclosure process despite not having original mortgages. They have taken bailouts from taxpayers with immunity and continue to give executives exorbitant bonuses. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Max. And then we have Noel Weiss. Ramirez Almav.
I just want to bring to your attention that there are those of us out here at the occupation that are very much interested in discussing an exit strategy. I don't want to be here forever, and I'd like to see the prevailing concern for the occupation that banks, who are existent and define themselves by being able to circumvent the law of the free market, ought to be addressed, and we can discuss a solution. A solution that addresses reducing their influence over the economy and actually also working on making sure that the cities such as Los Angeles and the cities all over the country are no longer suffocating from lack of revenues. We can do this. We can have this conversation. I am an economist. I can actually discuss the subject of high-level finance and tax revenues and moving them efficiently. I'd like to see the City Council be more forthcoming in having these discussions. I've been to District Three and District Six so far, and they haven't been very welcoming in actually having an actual conversation. So if you see me come into your office, please, please think about having, or ask your staff to sit down and just discuss having, discuss a subject involving reducing the influence that banks have over the economy, and also being able to move tax revenues more efficiently for both the city, the state, and even the federal government. The solution that I am advancing specifically is offering the public central accounting services as opposed to central banking services. Banks are investment firms, and we are not supposed to state-sanction investment in a free market. Thank you.
Noel Weiss.
Counsel, good morning. Couple of things. One, back in June, when Janice Hahn was still on the council, she sponsored, and the council passed a motion ten to two, giving the fans an opportunity, the city council and the city of L.A., an opportunity to get behind the idea of the people of L.A. owning the Dodgers. Hundred thousand people, 10,000 a pop, however you want to calculate it, that's a billion dollars. That's 100% equity. It's kind of like what the Green Bay Packers did. Janice Hahn, yesterday, introduced such a bill allowing for that, and frankly, I would like to see the leaders, mayors' potential, as well as the City Council, lead that kind of a citizen empowerment movement, assuming that the powers that be really aren't afraid of empowering the people. That's really the open question. On that, in that connection, another matter that involves 12,000, 12,500,000 gallons of propane and butane, two tanks of that equivalent apiece in San Pedro. Jan Perry introduced a motion. Motion is now Mr. Englander's committee. I would like Mr. Englander to schedule a hearing on that motion. It's either a typical pandering study motion, or it's for real. We need to basically get at that. Currently, the city attorney, frankly, has, I think, let down the people, because what there is now is a revocable permit with no insurance if those tanks blow by accident. Guys, you got to listen, honestly. It's really not right to the public. I got Mr. Cardenas talking to Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts talking to Mr. Krikorian, I mean, Mr. Garcetti talking to Mr. Parks. You know what? Honestly, it's not right. The bottom line is, Mr. Englander needs to schedule that. Thirdly, the Occupy L.A., in that connection, there does need to be an exit strategy, but I think the council, given the fact that, for example, Mr. Weston, he came through for the tenants a few years ago with four or five million bucks. I mean, he came through for a restaurant in his district for a couple of million bucks. Bottom line is, you know what? Give those people an office in City Hall. Let's see if we can't find community block grant monies of a couple of million dollars. Let these people bubble up with ideas. You can have a public meeting, and you can come up with something concrete where these people basically can be empowered.
Ramirez Almav.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Eighty percent of your crimes are coming out of East L.A., so I take great pride in doing Dennis Zine's job and the L.A. City Attorney's job. Thank you so much. I'd like to go ahead and expose the dirty racist Latino cops, que también es faltan huevos. Deputy Cruz, Deputy Aguirre, Henry Romero, Daniel Lopez, Lomely, Pedro Mejia, Valencia, Duranz, female Sandoval, female Para, Pacheco, Martinez, Jay Murillo, Hector Andujo, George Pernal, among others. I'd also like to expose those corrupted politicians. Please do not revote for them, and they are Reyes, Cárdenas, Alarcón, and Weezer. They have not helped the community, and as a law-abiding Mexican who stands up for the rights of others and with integrity and with principle, and not funding all these bogus grants to East L.A., please don't vote for them. And the criminal aliens that we have in East L.A. that are committing criminal stalking, and I deal with this every day, death threats, Luis and Luz Moya, 3721, 3739, 3744, 3747 and a half, 3741 and a half, 3748, 3749, 3750, 3759, East 55th Street, Maywood, California, 90270. The other ones is 3804, 3805, on 55th Street, Maywood, California, and 3804 and 5417 on Carmelita Street in Maywood, California, and 3738, East 54th Street, Maywood, California, 90270. And the reason I bring these up is because I've been criminally stalked, because I'm taking on the gangbangers. That's your job, you ain't doing it. I'm the ones being stalked, I've gotten death threats, and that's why I come here. I go through a ritual every bloody day, picking up license plates and reporting it. The deputies are nothing more than gangbangers, chango gangbangers in uniform. The East L.A., stop putting Latinos in pockets of neighborhoods, bring in whites, African-Americans, and Asians, and stop hiring Latinos, because they can't do nothing worth a crap. Thank you.
All right, Jesse Oliver Gray. Jesse Oliver Gray? You want to speak, sir? Go ahead, you got the microphone. Two minutes, public comment.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to stand in--
Mr. Reyes. Go ahead.
--address the fact that there is decorum here, there's respect, we have community people here, and the language that's being used by the previous speaker is unacceptable to this body. I have endured direct insults, derogatory statements, and it's unfortunate that the good people here have to be exposed and have to listen to such vulgarity, and I apologize on behalf of the folks that are here, who are here for good intentions, to participate in the civic process and have to endure such insults, and that is very degrading. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Mr. President, I am humbly requesting an emergency meeting with the President Garcetti. I've got a paper trail on the computer where I've sent several email messages since June of this year to the mayor's office, requesting an emergency meeting with the mayor for good news. Mr. Yousaf, the gentleman that just brought me a note when you called me up to talk, I just gave him some information. The mayor would be happy to find out that Los Angeles can get a hundred million dollar contribution before the end of this month. All he has to do, being the president of all mayors throughout the United States, is to have Mike Nutter, who is the vice president of all mayors throughout the United States, to assist in calling for a full-scale investigation on about me. I own seven patents, seven copyrights, seven websites. I'm also, please don't laugh at me, because I'm serious in what I'm saying, Colin Powell and I, Colin Powell's name is on my license to be the vice president of the United States of America. If you heard about Donald Trump, who is, said seven months ago that he had evidence to show that Barack Obama was not an American citizen, well, I am the individual who gave Donald Trump that information. I have evidence to show that Obama was born in his grandmother's bedroom in Kenya, West Africa. He was not born in Hawaii, which means everything that Obama has done connected to the Council on Foreign Relations, the Trilateral Commission, the Illuminati in the Boulay, which is connected to the Federal Reserve Board, has got all them people sleeping around City Hall, outside, all around the country, all of that can be stopped. But the only way it can be stopped is by you blessing me to have an emergency meeting with President Garcetti, and also a meeting with the mayor of Los Angeles, so that an emergency meeting can be held as quickly as possible in order to have Congressman Daryl Issa. Daryl Issa is the chairman of the Government Reforms and the Oversight Committee in the Congress. I gave him the evidence that he has right now. So all of this is coming down, it's coming down to an emergency hearing, please.
Thank you. Let's go to the San Fernando Valley Van Nuys. Herbert Thompson, Van Nuys City Hall, live and direct. Mr. Thompson, two minutes, public comment.
Good morning, L.A. City Council Board Member, President. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Herbert Thompson. I'm here on behalf of victims who are crime victims. I'm also a crime victim myself. I would like to say, in memory of David Thompson, David Spears, David Rojas, Ruben Tapia, who was brutally murdered in the streets of L.A., I'm here to get support for our Crime Awareness Prevention Campaign. I'm asking for support, and also, I would like to thank Honorable Tony Cardenas, Councilman Tony Cardenas, for his support from his office. Also, just this morning, I turned on the TV and heard that four bicyclists got shot. And also, I'm very concerned about these rampage shootings that's taking place here. If there's anyone that out there that can help us with our effort, with our Crime Awareness Prevention Campaign, they could reach me at herbatompson69@yahoo.com for more information. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're back here at City Hall. That completes public comment for today. Thank you for your comments, and we now have one final presentation with Councilmember Corretts. The group has arrived. This is our final presentation. Mr. Corretts, the floor is yours.
Later today, at the end of this meeting, I'm going to ask that we adjourn in memory of Verdia Daniels, who passed away in October and who is one of our city's and nation's great labor activists. In adjourning, we'll memorialize her life, but in this presentation, we rejoice in the gift of her life's work. That's because right now and throughout the month of November, we celebrate the Cause She Champion, which is the workers' movement of national family caregivers. Verdia Daniels was the founding matriarch of SEIU, United Long-Term Care Workers, and so I'm proud and delighted that joining us today is LaFonza Butler, the president of SEIU ULTCW, along with many others from her union, who on a daily basis demonstrate the heroic dedication of family caregivers. More than 65 million family caregivers in the United States provide some form of in-home care to a parent, grandparent, child, aunt, or uncle. Among those caregivers with the courage to care are more than 132,000 Los Angeles County in-home supportive services providers, delivering quality care to our most vulnerable residents. The work of in-home caregivers often goes unnoticed, as do the financial struggles that caregivers and their families experience in order to provide this lifeline service to those in need. The simplest truth is that the number of family and non-family members requiring in-home care is going to increase drastically, because the number of Americans 65 years of age and older is expected to double in the next 30 years. In order to meet the future demands of caregiving, we must ensure a stable workforce, including by recognizing today the important contributions in-home caregivers bring to those receiving care to our communities and to society as a whole. And that's why the month of November is designated as National Family Caregivers Month, offering a perfect opportunity to highlight the hard work, dedication, and courage to care that all in-home caregivers exemplify every day, in caring for both family and non-family members. For those reasons and more, I'm proud and delighted that the city of Los Angeles is declaring the month of November 2011 to be Family, National Family Caregivers Month, and we gratefully acknowledge the essential work and contributions made to our city, state, and nation by in-home caregivers. And now I'd like to invite LaFonza Butler to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember Corretts, and to all of the Los Angeles City Council for your support today for in-home caregivers, the members of United Long-Term Care Workers here in Los Angeles, where we represent 135,000 of these workers right here. here in Los Angeles, where we represent 135,000 of these workers right here in the county. Of the more than 6 million Californians who provide some form of in-home care for those in need, it is estimated that 600,000 are within the city of Los Angeles. It's essential that we shine a light on the important work that they do as caregivers and the courage that they have to care, as well as to the struggles and stresses that being a caregiver places on them and their families. This resolution today helps to do that. As SEIU United Long-Term Care Workers, we represent, as I stated, more than 135,000 in-home supportive services workers throughout the county of Los Angeles. But we are also a voice for anyone who takes on the challenges of caring for a parent, a grandparent, an aunt, an uncle, or a disabled child, since many of our members understand firsthand the emotional, physical, and financial difficulties that come with doing the work of what Senate President Steinberg has called God's work. I also want to thank you for dedicating today's council meeting in the memory of our founder, Verdia Daniels, who passed away on October 1st at the age of 81 years old. She served the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles as a caregiver for more than 35 years. It couldn't be more appropriate to receive this resolution as we honor her memory and her courage. More than a courageous woman for Los Angeles, who gave a voice to California home care workers by establishing our union over 10 years ago. Ms. Daniels also worked tirelessly to bring recognition and dignity to the work of caregivers all across this nation. Again, on behalf of the members of SEIU United Long-Term Care Workers and all Californians who have given and taken the role of being a care provider, we thank you.
And it's my honor to present LaFonza with this certificate recognizing National Family Caregivers Month on behalf of the city of Los Angeles.
And we have three council members, Councilmembers Garcetti, Wezar, and Reyes for comments. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you to all the members, gracias a todos los miembros por venir, all the members that are here today. I know when the president was a candidate, he went up to, I think it was Oakland, and spent a day in the shoes of a long-term care worker. I'm so proud to be the council member where your headquarters are and have been for a long time, because I've seen, not just in my own neighborhoods, but whether it was when we were in Watson, we saw the families who are fighting their way out of poverty. I challenge anybody in this age of union bashing and union busting right now to spend a day doing this work for the pay that you are given today. Were it not for the union, it would be even less, but we all know it barely even is enough to live off of. And the work that you do to make sure that our families are taken care of, I dare say one in eight, when you said 600,000, that's one in eight of our residents are touched by the work that you do. Thankfully, that's less than the police, or the fire, or, you know, most of our city workers ever touch. That means you're having a greater impact, I think, than almost any other caregivers out there who are providing public service. And I want to thank you because what you are, you are the front line in the fight against poverty, and the front line against keeping families whole, and the front line making sure that none of us spend our most vulnerable years lonely and uncared for. So God bless you. It is God's work. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wezar, then Mr. Reyes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Corretts, for bringing this resolution to council, for not only having us remember a great individual, but also for recognizing the work that our in-care home givers give. My father passed away 20 years ago of cancer, and his last few days he spent at home, not last, last few months he spent at home, and it was a caregiver who took care of him those last few days, provided his shots, provided his medicine, and they develop a special relationship that could only be held between someone who's caring for somebody at their last few months of life. So thank you on behalf of all the patients you've ever served. It's very, very important work, and it's great that we're here today recognizing this by the city of Los Angeles for the month of November. Thank you again for all your work.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. To want to rise, I also say thank you for your hard work. It's hard for many to understand what an opportunity it is to enter into the health services the way you have. We talk about job training, getting people into a career development, and as they provide their service, to be able to learn skills that deal with language, English, allowing folks to become trained, work ethic skills. These are entry-level positions that can harness an environment that speaks to future careers, about a future. These are entry-level positions that you can build upon, or you could continue to improve. So I want to thank you for being in a position where you can demonstrate this to the rest of the public. A lot of folks don't understand its significance until they need the help. A lot of folks who are going on with their life and realize that an aunt, an uncle, a parent, a grandparent now needs this help, and to keep going to work, you need a long-term care provider, whether it's at home or in a facility. But these are intricate steps where we should be building up as a city, as a state, as a country, and when we invest in our educational programs, because this is where we can introduce a whole new health career for many of our young people and people that are being retrained for a new career. So, thank you, Paul, for bringing them in. Gracias a todos que están aquí. Entiendo el esfuerzo y el sacrificio para estar en este oficio. Al mismo tiempo, lo bonito es para poder sostener una persona y darles los últimos días confortable con la familia y pues un final donde siquiera puede ser feliz por un rato. Es porque los esfuerzos de ustedes. So muchas gracias. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you, Paul, for highlighting it and letting us focus on it. The other day, we did a program here where the governor is cutting $160 million for adult daycare, which is outrageous. Let them cut something else, okay? Because you all know, you all know, and could you stand up, two caregivers, please? Let's everybody stand up who's here in the room on this. Stand up. When you talk about a penny, a dollar-wise foolish, you know, what do you spend your money on? What's a no-brainer? What makes the most sense? This kind of caregiving is the most effective and the cheapest. I can tell you from a personal experience, I have a gentleman at the house right now, he's almost 86, Swami ex-Swami, he busted his hip on May 11th, okay? Now he's in a wheelchair, he's in a hospital bed, he's, he's got, you know, my nephew, my nephew, Chris Rosendahl, spends over 10 hours a day as his primary caregiver. On top of that, I have a group called Tender Loving Care that, that brings in this incredible lady, Laverne, who comes in with a giggle every morning for four hours, six days a week. And you know, I had Swam in a nursing home, he almost died, because there was no individual attention, no appreciation of him, no sense of dignity and respect. So the caregivers are the critical element as we get older. We don't want to go to nursing homes, okay? No. Nursing homes don't really make us that happy. Swam could have gone because, you know, he's on medical. So he was there for a month, and he looked at me and he said, "Get me out of here, I'm going to die." So I got him back into the hospital, they stabilized him, I had an ambulance bring him back to the house, and we brought in a hospital bed and did all these kinds of things. And what I've learned from firsthand experience, and I've also been a caregiver for my brother Frank, who came in before he died too, and it is the most effective way of dealing with people as they get older, and it's also frankly the cheapest way. So God bless you all for doing it, and I really appreciate you coming down today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosendahl. Thank you. Mr. Corretts, congratulations to our caregiver at SEIU. Thank you for being here this morning. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item one, call special for cards.
Item number one. We have a number of cards on number one. Rosalie Preston. All right, ma'am. Go ahead. Two minutes.
My name is Rosalie Preston. I'm from the Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council, and I'm here today to protest the awarding of the franchise to Westpac. This is a company based in Irvine and owned by Buckeye Partners, which is part of the 1%, while we, the residents, parks, and schools of the area along the pipeline route in Wilmington, Carson, Compton, Gardena, Hawthorne, and El Segundo, the 99%, will be stuck with the future consequences, meaning the risk of explosion and future leakage from the pipeline into our groundwater and aquifer systems. This project has supposedly been approved because it provides a small number of construction jobs. However, the jobs, according to the Westpac Pipeline webpage, will last for just six months. This short-sighted decision on your part promotes the use of fossil fuel and therefore an increase in carbon output and global warming in contradiction of AB 32. There are already four existing pipelines from local refineries which supply jet fuel to airlines at LAX. This is not a replacement for those pipelines, but an additional, much larger diameter pipeline to serve the business needs of one very large and powerful corporation. And finally, the annual revenues from this franchise will contribute to the L.A. city budget will be just a few thousand dollars. Shame on you. And I ask for a 30-day extension to allow for more public comment on this issue.
Jesse Marquez. Jesse Marquez.
My name is Jesse Marquez. I'm a lifetime Wilmington resident and executive director, Coalition for a Safe Environment. I'm here to ask for you to postpone this vote for another 30 days. I have attended planning commission meetings, committee meetings, and this meeting, and not once was I notified, even though I submitted public comments, both written and the public comment card. I ask that you not go along with this project proposal because we already have four sources of jet fuel, two major oil refineries, Volpak and Kinder Morgan. We do not need a third one. Westpac is not a refiner. All jet fuel will be imported from third-world countries, who, and those countries do not have the type of air quality standards that we do, they do not have the greenhouse gas programs that we have, and we do not want to be importing and have another foreign petroleum fuel source that we do not need. The environmental impact report failed to assess and mitigate the VOCs from the fuel tanker ships. They failed to look at technologies that could mitigate this, such as the Advanced Maritime Emissions Control System, which captures 92% to 98% of all emissions from a ship. They failed to include a health impact assessment to determine all the public, all the public's health impacts from these operations. They failed to include a socioeconomic impact that identifies the costs that we, the public, will incur, such as public health care, public infrastructure, public utilities. Westpac does not have a fire department, so how can they put out any fire or do any responding? Our L.A. Fire Department, it does not have the capability. There was a pick-your-part junk fire in Wilmington last year. Fire Department could not get in there because there was no fire truck lanes, they could not put out the fire because there was no fire hydrants there, had to be pumped in, and so there are numerous things that need to be addressed that have not been dealt with. In your franchise fees that you're agreeing to, they do not cover the costs that the public will be incurring to support this. They also do not address the city's liabilities. So again, we ask for an extension for comment.
Thank you. Joan Jacobs. Again, you have two minutes. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joan Jacobs, and I represent Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council. My question, I have a couple of questions and comments. My first question is regarding the need or the relevance of this pipeline. Regarding the need, we already have pipelines which supply jet fuel to the airports. And regarding the relevance, airlines are looking towards using biofuels in the future instead of jet fuels, and some airlines have in fact already begun using them. My second comment and question is that these jobs provided are very temporary, and my question is, how many of the even temporarily employed would actually be local residents of the areas directly affected by the work on these pipelines? And then thirdly, I ask for a 30-day extension for more public comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This situation is kind of amazing. You're talking about, I don't know if, if the council has read this, but if you guys read this, we're talking about, you know, the visions of the San Bruno situation have to come into one's head, and there is only a performance bond of $15,000 in this. That seems a little low, don't you think? I mean, at a minimum, if we're talking about securing the performance of this entity in connection with the maintenance and installation and servicing of a pipeline that carries volatile fuels, you think $15,000 as a performance bond is sufficient? In addition, what about the insurance? If the thing blows, if you have another San Bruno, the insurance is only $5 million. Who is the insurer? What's going on? Honestly, people, you really do need to at least discuss it, debate it, decide whether or not you are putting the people under this kind of a risk in order to, I mean, it, you know, honestly, it is just amazing. It is just amazing, because Mr. Englander, who is for supposedly being polite to the people, he's talking to Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Reyes is talking to Mr. Wezar, Mr. Weston's talking to Mr. Garcetti. I mean, you know what?
Mr. Weiss, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Weiss. Let's stay on the subject matter, please. You, you know that the council members listening, while they may be watching their monitors, your comments need to be addressed to this particular issue, sir.
My comments are being addressed to the issue.
Not when you're discussing the conduct of the council members, sir.
No, no, you know what? This is not a, Mr. Zine and Mr. President and Council, you people have to have a little bit more of a thick skin. The bottom line is, you got to respect the public, you work for the public.
Mr. Weiss, the comments need to be directed towards this particular subject, not, that public comment is passed, sir, and so is your time. Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, I just want to appreciate the community interest here, and I'd like to refer this back to my committee, and I would like to have the city attorneys and others discuss it more fully, so we have a chance to really understand it as a group, and then have them present it back to the council for the full council discussion.
All right, we still have two more public comments, and then we can make that motion. Ben Thompson, Ben Thompson, followed by Arnold Sachs, and then Mr. Rosendahl will make a
Good morning. My name is Ben Thompson, and I am with Westpac Energy, the proponents of this project. I'd like to just kind of remind us where we are. This process has been going on for probably three or four years. All questions that were asked were addressed in the EIR. Every step of the way, this has been unanimously approved by the Transportation Commission, Transportation Committee, the city council the first time around, then we had to go back, and we've done that again, and it's been approved again unanimously thus far. This was supported very strongly by Councilperson Han when she was in the council. So there is that support. This is a process that's taken a number of years. We've had many hearings, we've had many We've had many hearings, we've had many community meetings. This is an infrastructure project at no cost to the public. On August 2nd, this EIR was certified by this city council. So what we're looking for now is just a franchise grant so we can get on with this process. This was originally supposed to be in service by February of 2009. Now we're in November of 2011, and we're still asking for approval. So we've agreed with the councilperson in Council Office 15 for community benefits. We ask you, please, let us get on with this. Please give us the franchise so we can move ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks, our final speaker.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. What I'd like to see from this item on your agenda is this, Westpac Pipelines have the ability to interact on the other city infrastructures, like the sewers and the water lines that seem to be breaking all the time. If they have the ability to maintain this pipeline, maybe they could work as a subcontractor for the city and get the things accomplished that the city agencies, like the DWP, can't seem to get together. And especially, I'm really wondering how a $600 good faith deposit, what the financial aspects of this pipeline are, because $600, well, that's barely enough. You can't even cover rent for $600 for a one-bedroom apartment. So if they have that kind of financial resources, put them to work for the other city with the other aging infrastructure.
Mr. Rosendahl, on this matter?
So, you know, there's tremendous pressure from staff that have gone through this process that support what you just heard one of the speakers say. But I think in fairness to everyone here around the horseshoe and to the community out there, I will take it back with, if I get a second on this, to the Transportation Committee at the next available meeting, which will be very soon, so we don't really screw up any deadlines or timetables, but air it again and then have that brought before the council for us to vote. So I move that, I send it back to committee right now, and we'll move quickly on it and bring her back to the council.
Right. Without opposition, the matter will be returned to committee, Transportation Committee. No opposition to that? That'll be the direction.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That matter will be going back to committee for further review, folks. Thank you for your coming down this morning. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item two, called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Number two? Nope. No cards.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise just briefly on this one, and I'm sure the folks that are here for it would have been just as happy for it to pass on consent. But let me, let me just glow for a moment about a very special project that's going to be happening here in Los Angeles and Hollywood, something that will put 600 construction workers back to work over the next two years, create permanent jobs in the heart of Hollywood, and have a dynamic piece of architecture in a neglected part of Sunset Boulevard between the 101 Freeway and Vine Street. Today, this is just a TEFRA hearing to help issue some bonds on the financing. But Emerson College, a well-known, well-renowned educational institution on the East Coast that's always had a very strong presence here in Los Angeles, churning out the next generation of writers and producers, actors, performers, and the entertainment industry, is building a campus in Hollywood, which has really emerged as a 24/7 campus, whether it's Los Angeles Community College, whether it's looking at the American Musical and Dramatic Arts Academy, other folks that are all around central Hollywood now. We estimate about 40,000 students. And Emerson College students have been there for a long time. But here today, we're going to be looking at the bond financing for 115,000 square-foot mixed-use building that contains classrooms, administrative office space, student housing, faculty apartments, a parking garage, and it's all designed by the renowned architect Tom Main, who did the Caltrans building across the street. I just want to thank Emerson for their belief in Los Angeles. We navigated some tricky local politics and got to resolution to make sure that we could do well for residents, for business owners, and for Emerson. And so you don't go through that many rounds of negotiations and fighting without at least saying a little bit when we finally get there. So I want to thank Peggy and Maureen, who are here, the entire team here that has been a part of it as well, and ask for your support today. It's time to put people back to work, educate our next generation of creative professionals, and continue the revitalization of Hollywood. So I ask for your eye vote, and thank you very much.
Congratulations. It looks like you're the only speaker on this matter. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
You got it. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Next item, please.
Item number three, called special by Councilmember Parks. I believe Mr. Parks's questions have been answered, and he's ready to move forward.
There is one card on this matter. Mr. Parks, number three. There was a public hearing?
Yes.
There was a public hearing already?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we don't have to take the card then. Mr. Parks, you will vote for approval on this? All right. On number three, colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Next item, please.
Item number five, called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, number five, sir.
Yeah, just hold that at the desk for about 10 minutes.
We will hold number five. Next item, please.
Item six, called special by Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. Six, number, hold that. You want to go?
No, no, I want to talk about that real quickly.
All right, number six, go ahead.
The Bicycle Plan Trust Fund. I just want to share with you what this is about, and for the viewers as well. The Bicycle Trust Fund was one of the programs called for in our recent approval of the Bike Plan. And the intent of the trust fund is basically to create a centralized location to receive development monies designated for bike infrastructure. This is really a cool idea, folks. Establish this account will enable what we're not commingling the money with other funds. It helps ensure that money set aside for bicycle infrastructure gets spent on bicycle infrastructure. And to be clear, this action does not establish any new fees or redirect any existing revenue streams into this account. It only allows for the establishment of the fund, so that if a developer wants to provide funding for a bicycle infrastructure on a voluntary condition of approval, we have a place where one can collect the money. I think it's great, and we should be getting ahead of this task rather than having to react later. So I'm happy to support it. I just wanted to highlight that for colleagues, and I would ask for unanimous support.
Thank you. And I know that yesterday, at the SCAG meeting, Southern California Association of Governments, they discussed additional bike paths throughout this region.
Fabulous.
So right in line to what you're discussing. So I want to show that the Southern California Association of Governments, representing six counties, is right on board with that.
Yeah, and it's beautiful, and I wanted our viewers to see it, that this is something that's exciting. It came out of our Bike Plan, and I ask for unanimous support. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. On that item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Next item, please.
Item seven, called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Yes, I'd like to ask staff to come to the table real quickly on this one, and I know Mr. Parks wanted to add an amendment to this rather quickly, which I want to say upfront, that what I would like is that the final execution of the MOU is subject to the concurrence of the city attorney and the CAO. That was Mr. Parks' suggestion in committee, and of course, I support that. Please give us a quick thumb.
We have one card on this also. Arnold Sacks.
Oh, great. But go ahead, give it first before he speaks.
Good morning. My name is Khan Hu, with LA DOT. This item before you is about getting the authority to enter an MOU with MTA to receive the $28 million federal grant to implement the Wiltshire BRT project.
Very good. And I know there's a public comment card, so that would be fine.
Arnold Sacks, public comment, number seven, two minutes.
Yes, thank you very quick. The gentleman just mentioned that you're going to get a $20 million federal grant for this Wiltshire Rapid Bus Transit project, but you're looking for, that would only leave you a shortfall of 8.34 million. So direct the LA DOT to identify the specific source of funding to be used for the city's 3.3 million contribution to the project, which leaves a difference of $5.04 million to come up with. There is no part of this accident mentions where that five, over $5 million will come from. And just as a quick aside, the gentleman who spoke earlier on the pipeline mentioned that it was supposed to have been operating in 2009. This Wiltshire Bus Rapid Transit system probably should have been operating in 1999. So welcome to the city council and the city of LA.
All right, that matters before us, colleagues. Open the roll, close.
I'm just second on my amendment, and Mr. Parks is seconding the amendment.
Very well. So on the amended motion for this item, I think that was $28 million, Mr. Rosendahl.
That's right.
Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Next item, please.
Item nine, called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, number nine.
Quickly, I know that everybody, it's Friday and all that, but I would like Jim Clark come on up, and also, and CDD. Jim Clark and CDD. Folks, you know what we went through for this last summer. On May 10th of this year, I introduced a resolution out of my deep concern for implementing loss of federal ARA funding to provide summer jobs to thousands of LA youth. According to our own Community Development Department, nearly 20% of the youth in Los Angeles, ages 16 to 24, are disconnected from education and employment. This equates to 97,000 who are not in school, work, or preparing to enter the workforce. Talk about occupation. I mean, let's face it, jobs are important. This is coupled with a 35% youth unemployment rate in the city. 35%. In 2009, the city's workforce development system received a one-time allocation of $44.8 million in adult, dislocated worker, youth, and rapid response funds through ARA. With this stimulus funding, the WDS was able to provide over $26 million towards summer youth program. This provided jobs to over 7,500 youth during the summer of 2009, and over 9,000 during the summer of 2010. Hear that? 7,500 and 9,000. These ARA funds were only available for expenditures until June 30th of this year. Federal funding for the program year 2011 and '12 has now been completely eliminated, leaving the youth of Los Angeles extremely vulnerable. It is imperative that we adopt this resolution to include in our federal legislative program support for any legislation that would fully fund the summer youth employment program, not only here in Los Angeles, but nationwide. We cannot let another summer go by without providing our youth, our country's future, with access to employment opportunities. I know it's November, and the summer's coming down, but it's, now's the time for us to take action. What we need is this Congress, the House and the Senate, and this president, to do something significant and stop their gridlock back in Washington, and youth are at stake in this. So Jim, give us an update, and please, Department, tell us more, and the resolution, will that be of help?
Jim Clark, Director of Federal Relations in the mayor's office, and I'm joined by Lisa Salazar from the Community Development Department. To answer your question, yes, this resolution will help very much. We have a real serious problem back in Washington DC with the, I would say, the lack of any sort of bipartisanship and the gridlock that's occurred there. We've tried for several years to try and get the Congress to authorize a summer youth jobs program. They have not been able to do that. The Obama administration, the president has put in his American Jobs Act some language that would invest in summer youth job, has identified that. But as you know, the overall bill was defeated in the Senate. They've now tried to break it up into individual parcels. They first tried to create $35 billion for firefighters and for teachers. That was defeated. They've tried to do an infrastructure part of it, which was defeated yesterday. I understand the next portion they're going to try and do is see if they can pay for veterans, but, and at some point, we would hope that this item would come up, but every time it comes up, it gets voted down because there's a, they're asking for it to be paid for with a tax increase on people making over $1 million. The other part, though, there is funding that is available for youth employment. As you know, there were, there were some cuts that were made this year for fiscal year 11. There is $825 million available for fiscal year 11. The president had proposed for next year 900, almost $924 million for youth programs. They're doing the markups right now in the House and the Senate on their appropriations bills for next year. The Senate has kept the funding at the same level of $826 million. Unfortunately, the House proposal is to slash that almost in half.
Why?
They're trying to find, for whatever reason, they don't believe that these programs are as effective, and they want to create private sector jobs rather than, rather than putting people to work.
Well, wait a minute. What happens to the young people next summer with that kind of a strategy?
Well, I would, I'll turn that over to Lisa to add on to that about what we've been doing here and, and what, what the problems have been in trying to push this program forward.
Please do. And I think occupation around the nation needs to hear this too, because this is a significant issue, that young people can't find work, and it's a critical part of their growth and development, frankly. Go for it.
Absolutely, Councilman. Well, thanks to all of your support, we were able to put nearly 6,000 young people to work this past summer. However, I must tell you that by May, we had at least 20,000 unsolicited requests for summer jobs. That was no advertisement, no even speak of the possibility of summer jobs, and 20,000 young people came to our centers requesting applications for summer jobs. I also want to share with you that in just this past September, when we went out and did the Student Recovery Day, that is, going after young people who had not returned to school this year, in every instance, when we offered or made available to them the opportunity to work, if they returned to school, got their attendance back on track, that a summer job could be something that they could access if they, if they did well and got back on track. In every instance, they perked up, and that was a huge incentive for them. Summer jobs is a, is a bridge activity that cannot be matched by any other bridge activity in between school years. It gives young people meaningful work experience, it allows them to earn a paycheck, and to contribute back to their families that are just struggling so much right now.
And we also know too, that, that summer youth jobs contributes highly to the economy, because when you, when you pay a summer youth employee on Friday, that money is basically, you know, in their pocket and out of their pocket within a couple of days. So it's used to stimulate the economy.
Yeah, and we have this resolution here, folks, that we want your approval. And, you know, I got to shout out that District 2 put in 25,000, District 3 put in 200,000, District 7 put in 200,000, District 8 put 200,000, District 13 put in 30,000, District 15 put in 200,000. That's how different council members here showed real leadership in trying to save jobs and create jobs in the summer. I got to really applaud my colleagues for that. But what more can we do to give those folks in Washington, especially those who are drinking tea, to stop not dealing with the reality of young people?
Well, I think what we need to keep doing is telling what the impact of this is, telling personal stories, trying so that people back in DC can relate to what these actions that they're taking really mean to Main Street. And so that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do. We're going to be focusing on a town hall meeting next Wednesday to focus on the impact of these federal funding cuts on veterans in light of Veterans Day. So, but we want to, I think that's something that we could schedule in the future, talk about summer youth jobs as well too, and the impact on, on cities across the country.
Great. Did you want to add anything?
Without summer jobs, we're going to lose a generation that will have no connection to work. You can go through school, get your degree, but if you've had no work experience, it just makes it all that much more difficult. We see college graduates coming through all the time that don't have work experience, and this is the only way that young people can get that connection to work. They're out there competing with dislocated workers, with folks who've been in unemployment. I mean, it's just tough, tough times. And as you mentioned earlier, young people are taking the brunt of it, with the unemployment rate right now across the country of at least 35%.
It's unbelievable. Well, colleagues, I just thought we needed to discuss that and be aware of it. That is a resolution that says, Washington, get your act together. 2012 is an election cycle, and maybe some of the members of the House that can't appreciate this will be thrown out, and that will get enough people that appreciate that young people and their future is paramount to all of us. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Colleagues, I ask for unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. On this matter, colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Next item, please.
Item 10, called special for cards.
Number 10, Arnold Sacks. Number 10, two minutes.
Good afternoon, good morning again, Arnold Sacks. This plan, as Councilman Rosendahl said regarding actions taken in Washington, maybe we could get the representative who's, used to sit on the City Council, Janice Hahn, to put in a motion to, for the, for this U.S. Travel Association Job Takeoff Program, instead of worrying more about the Dodgers and who will own them, I think getting the jobs, but is more important than that. This is a plan to create 1.3 million U.S. jobs by welcoming millions of international travelers. Is this a program that'll be, have funding in reserve? I'm really curious because of the development that's going to be occurring in downtown LA as far as the LA Live and the, and the move to create hotel jobs. Will this be subsidizing workers at these hotel jobs? Will this be subsidizing the ownership for the hotels that are going to be built in, in downtown LA regarding the stadium initiative, the non-binding MOU that the City Council has in regards to that? This seems to be throwing, it's a wonderful idea, but it seems to be throwing good money after bad when subsidies are given out to the 1%ers, again, in lieu of giving money or allocating funding to people that really need it. And the tourist corridor along Century Boulevard, just exactly how is this money going to be allocated out? What would be the percentage of, to come to LA based on the jobs to be created? There is no information in this item.
All right, that matters before us, number 10. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 12, call special by Councilmember Wesson. An amended motion, 12A, has been circulated.
Mr. Wesson, 12 and 12A. 12, and then you did an amended motion, 12A.
Oh, is it, has it been?
It's circulated.
Then I ask for a I-vote.
No cards. Very well. I vote on that, recommended by Mr. Wesson. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 13, call special by Councilmember Parks and for cards.
Mr. Parks, Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks, number 13. Two minutes, public, yeah, one minute, Mr. Sacks. One minute remaining on your time today. One minute for number 13.
Yes, thank you. Very quickly, exposition light rail line, another joke of Transportation Committee work in the city of LA. My question regarding anything involving Phase Two, this is a project labor agreement project. Are the figures that result in the hiring, the local hiring, available, other than at the Construction Authority meetings? Should those figures be made available? Should those figures be broadcast in the City Council? Because this light rail line runs through a great portion of the city of LA. I think it would be beneficial for the public because of all this projects that are upcoming to be governed by project labor agreements, that these projects, the, the number of people working on them are published, publicated and, and published in the City Council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask the City Attorney to come up. Colley, this is the item that we continued on Wednesday, where we were requesting the City Attorney to, first of all, to give us a understanding of how do we get involved in the Amicus brief, and we altered that motion to direct them to get involved in that litigation. And Pete, if you can tell us where we are now and what is our, you're asking us to do.
Yes, Mr. President, and members, if, if you recall, when we were last before you on this matter, we mentioned that there was a, somewhat of a reluctance on the writer of the Amicus brief to have others join on the brief. We've had discussions with them now, and we've cleared up the, a misunderstanding. They are, they are quite willing to add the city of Los Angeles as an amici, as a member of the amici on the brief that will support the exposition light rail line extension, second phase, and all, all you would need to do at this point in time is to simply adopt a motion approving the city joining in that brief.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, I'd ask that we approve the amended motion on Wednesday, where we request the City Attorney to join the Amicus brief regarding the litigation involving exposition light rail Phase Two.
All right. No one on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Called by Councilmember Rosendahl.
I didn't hear you on the mic.
Item five.
Item five.
Yeah, that's the status of the, of the previous bike plan. Is Claire here to give us a quick thumbnail on this, Planning Department? The important part, and I gotta say that Claire played a major role in putting the five-year plan together. She was able to work with all kinds of groups in the bicycling world, and people know that, that it's a challenge at times, and your ability to move with the group and get them on board and to get the five-year plan, I applaud you and your leadership, Claire. What, what are we proving today, quickly? I know it's the past, but people need to know that as well.
Right, so, great. Thank you, Claire Bowen, City of Planning. One of the real hallmarks of the plan was the development of the Bicycle Plan Implementation Team, and that's really been a key to its, or is moving the implementation forward. We've actually met four times, the Bicycle Plan Implementation. We met actually every single month up through July, and now we're actually moving to a quarterly meeting process, and that allows bicycle advocates and community members to come together and discuss with us what are, there are going to be the obstacles, what are, what are the ways we're going to want to look at, how we're going to accommodate those bicycle lanes in each of the different miles that are in that first five-year package. We've got a package of 40 miles of bicycle lanes that we're actually going to be putting forth together into an environmental impact report, so we can actually clear those lanes and be able to put them in place.
Great. And, and colleagues, just on a side note, last night, we opened up the Google operation in Venice. There were 600 people there, and there were 100 bicycles, because the workers, some of them, they're all young, a lot of young people, they bike to work. And of course, we love that, more bicycling, less cars, less congestion, less, less pollution, and everything else. So I just want to thank you for your leadership, but as you continue to bring the cyclists together, the more they're engaged, the more they're involved, the happier I am in the plan. Thank you for your leadership, and I ask for us to move forward with this motion.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Claire and the Planning Department for their hard work, chairing planning and land use and doing a joint committee with the Transportation Committee, brought us to a place where we can finally see a real product. But yesterday, in the Southern California Association of Governments, we voted on the regional transportation plan. This regional transportation plan is literally the document the region uses when federal funds are being identified and sought for improvements. The bicycle element, what they call active transportation allotment and percentage for those funding-type programs, were increased for bikes. But some think, some think it's not enough, that we need to increase the percentage of federal resources that are targeting bicycle-related, active-related transportation that stimulates a safer environment for pedestrians and bikes. So this is a very timely event. If we can posture ourselves so that those who are learning to shift their daily behavior to think about a bike, to think about a shuttle, to think about transit, public transit, this city will be much healthier and at a much quicker pace than, than we are at now. So for that, I thank my colleagues and the Planning Department for working so hard and realizing this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. On this item, number five, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, a special one motion has been circulated.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that the City Council offer a reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the suspect driving a pickup truck on August 11th, 2011, at 8:40 a.m. near Long Beach Avenue and 40th Place, which struck and seriously injured Mrs. Irma Rodriguez. Immediate action is required to offer the reward for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Thank you. On the findings, anybody wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. On the substance, Mr. Parks.
In behalf of Ms. Perry, I would ask the public, first of all, that we approve this reward motion, but for the public's help on identifying the person that's involved with this crime. Ms. Rodriguez suffered very serious injuries, losing both of her legs in this accident. The hit-and-run driver fled from the scene and was only described as a possible Ford F-100 gray in color. Anyone having information about this August 11th, 2011 incident that occurred at 8:40 a.m.? Contact Detective Jose De Leon at 213-972-1845, or Josephine Matson at 213-972-1846. We ask for an I-vote on the reward motion and ask for public help.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll on Special One, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
As approved, we'll send that forth with, without objection. You can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Englander, Weezer, Caress, Coria, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, let's go ahead, and the first items, please.
Items 14 and 15 are items which public hearings have been held. For item 14, the Housing Committee Report has been circulated.
All righty, anybody wishing to, sorry, this is a notice for public hearing, or?
Public hearings have been held.
Okay, they've been held. All right, items 14 and 15, anybody wishing to call those, either those special or reopen the public hearing? Seeing none on 14 and 15, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, those are approved on 14 and 15. Next items, please.
Items 16 through 21 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
If there's no objection, those are before us, and we do have cards on item number 16, which Mr. Caress would like to also call special. We have card on number 18, and card on 19. Close the other public hearings. And any other specials besides those three, colleagues? We also have 17. I'll call those special, just, just briefly. We'll call 16, 17, excuse me, and 18. We can take those together, Mr. Caress. That leaves us with 20 and 21. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. If we can come back to items called special, let's take 16, 17, and 18 together. There's one card first before Mr. Caress is recognized, and, sorry, we have two cards. One on 16 is Antonio Ramirez, and then Mr. Sacks, you have a card on number 18.
I have a question before the time starts. I, I put in a card for number 15. I'm just...
We'd already had a public hearing in committee, so it requires a council member to reopen that, or else that satisfies the public hearing.
Can you start me now, is up now, please, because it's already running?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you go, don't worry.
Okay. We know that subitem number three, that the LA City Attorneys have not acted in good faith nor in the best interest of the LA firefighters and fire captain, and the City Attorney wants to run for DA's office, please don't elect them. Please don't elect them at all. Having said that, had the Latino politicos, cardenas, Weezer, Reyes, and Alarcon stop funding bogus grants, monies to, um, East LA residents, and the criminal illegals and gangbangers, we would have a surplus of funds to maintain and expand...
Mr. President, I don't, I don't believe she's on this item.
...the fire departments and, um, the fire departments and the fire captains, and hire more pilot, chopper pilots, and, and also, thank you for the interruption, and also, hire more military veterans in your fire department. And again, public safety is in deep peril because of these Latino politicos handing bogus money grants to these Latinos, gangbangers, and criminal illegal aliens on bogus programs.
If I could respectfully ask you to bring back the firefighters' memorandum of understanding.
Okay, again, the firefighters are in grave jeopardy because there have been so many cutbacks on every area, from maintenance to their own safety protective gear, and what we are doing is we're sabotaging public safety, and again, one day we're going to have a major blaze throughout the city of Los Angeles, God forbid, and we are too busy funding these illegals, and we would have a surplus of money if they would not fund all these criminal illegal alien programs. So I'm asking all of you, do not hire, do not reelect these gangbangers in suits, Reyes, Alarcon, Weezer, and...
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I do have to respectfully say, you are, it's not because you're criticizing councilmembers, you can do that in your, in the public comment, but this is for, I'm sorry, ma'am, I'll, I'll hold your time, don't worry, but if you'll just hear me out for a second, just respectfully, you can say that in general public comment. Right now, we're talking about a specific negotiation with our firefighters and, and our fire captain, so if you could comment on that, please, okay? Ten seconds.
Enough, we're talking about their safety and ours. It's a two-pronged situation, their safety, their well-being, and their wholeness, as well as ours. Please, let's protect them. No one is protecting them, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. That'll close, item 16's general public comment. Mr. Arnold Sacks on number 18. Is Mr. Sacks still here? There he is.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Mr. President?
Yes?
Do we get two minutes for this special meeting?
Yes, you're, you're on right now, yeah.
Yeah, but do we get two minutes to speak on the special meeting?
Uh, you'll, you'll, I'll call you at least a minute on number 19.
So one-on-one, that's what I wanted to know. Could you restart my time, please? Thank you.
Go ahead, we can keep it, I'll count a minute off, don't worry.
Um, actually, what I was going to question about this, again, this is the memorandum of understanding, and yet, when I questioned the city's previous, a non-binding memorandum of understanding with the LA Live project, I asked about the difference, and the City Attorney, in his wisdom, mentioned one's binding and one's non-binding. But we're talking about a lot of money here. Well, we're talking about a lot of money for the non-binding MOU, because in the three years that this MOU will be in agreement, you're going to save not 1.5 million, not hun, it's $150,000 in fiscal year 2012 and '13, $70,000 in fiscal year 13, '14, and $500,000 in fiscal year 11 and '12. So what do you do? $720,000 in three years of fiscal savings, and the way it's written in this item on the agenda is millions, .5 million, .15 million, and .07 million. It's chump change for an MOU, and you're making the public into chumps. $720,000. Look at some of the items on your agenda that $720,000 eat up. You probably spend $720,000 in city funds doing presentations on a good day. It's absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. That will close comments on number 18, and we first have Mr. Caress. We'll just take these three together, if that's all right, Mr. Caress.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take a moment to recognize all of the hard work of the CAO, the Fire Department, and UFLAC in generating substantial savings to the city with this agreement. I think it's truly a moment of distinction for all of us, and illustrates that when we work with our partners in labor, everybody benefits. Savings associated with the new MOU between the city and UFLAC have resulted in a net savings to the city of approximately $12 million for this fiscal year of 11, '12, 3.4 million for 12, '13, and 1.7 million in the fiscal year 2013, '14. And I recall that during our budget deliberations this year, we discussed that savings as a result of negotiations with UFLAC would go back to that department. So taking that into account, I would like to move that consistent with council direction during the 2011, 2012 budget deliberations, savings from labor negotiations with UFLAC are returned to the Fire Department to cover projected budgetary shortfalls and for enhanced services as a result of the recent deployment plan. And I would like to further move that since this is such a significant issue with substantial impact to our critical, critical fire and paramedic services, that the CAO, CLA, and the Fire Department report on the allocation of savings as a result of the MOUs directly to full council on Wednesday, November 16th, so that we can have this money immediately council on Wednesday, November 16th, so that we can have this money immediately positively impact our fire services if that is available. Can I get a second to this motion?
Second.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Mr. Parks.
We just ask that that go to Budget and Finance so it could be evaluated, because I think what we have lost sight of is that the plan and the deployment for the Fire Department is incorporated into the budget balancing, and if you unravel that, then the budget is no longer balanced. And so, the savings have already been accounted for and staying afloat. And so, I'd ask that that motion go to Budget and Finance, so CAO and CLA can review it.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you. I want to say a couple of general comments, and then I'll address that as well. Well, why don't I address that first? I was actually the maker of the motion on that, that policy that exists, and it was about new revenues that came in, and I don't believe we've adopted a policy on any savings, especially those, because we've gone with each, each union and said, okay, you represent 40% of civilians, here's your chunk, you have to give us 40%, and then we balance the budget with that. If we were to take that and add that to a department, even the own department, it would, we don't have a standing policy for that. What I did, because I made the motion, is if we got any increased revenues, they'd go to libraries, which we solved with Measure L. And then, secondly, it would go towards the Fire Department. So, you know, I don't, I would have the same worry that we wouldn't have a balanced budget. What I do like, Mr. Caress, that you're saying, and I've encouraged both our firefighter unions and the department to keep reminding us, is that we actually do have that as a, as a self-pass binding policy, that as we get any new higher revenues, that the first call on those should be back on deployment and back into the department. So as we look at that during the year, I think that's a way of achieving that. Let me just say a couple of things more generally. On these three MOUs, memorandums of understanding on our firefighters, you haven't seen a lot of headlines about pension reform and, and the lack of fiscal discipline here in Los Angeles, and I think that's a good thing. That's because it means we've accomplished what we set out to do, to avoid the gridlock and the partisanship, the brinksmanship in Sacramento and Washington, to avoid the walkouts and the lockouts, the union bashing, which often sounds good and feels good, but doesn't get us actually as deep results. Instead, we have focused on those results, and today, we can add to the hundreds of millions of dollars in taxpayer savings that we've achieved by putting politics aside and instead focusing on tough negotiations. We focused on structural reforms, a new pension tier for sworn personnel, and larger employee payments toward their retirements. And all told, what we've done, and I just wanted to pause because we've done this collectively, the savings totaled over $500 million in just the next three years. What we've done stands apart, and without the disruptions that are rocking other locales, we've also cut the city hall's general payroll by about 4,000, the size that it was outside of fire and police about 20 years ago, when L.A. had 1 million fewer people. So, colleagues, instead of playing politics, the councils and the union alike have been able to look at the hard numbers. We've told them they have to step up, and they have, and I want to thank them. Look at the hard decisions, do the hard work needed to bring tough fiscal reforms. There's much more to be done, but these, this is good news to be able to vote on these three MOUs. And I want to thank the good faith negotiations, the hard work of our CAO especially, who sometimes goes forgotten, but we have not forgotten the great work that you have done. So thank you for that as well, and, and I think that, that we can achieve potentially what you're talking about, but we should look at that without it becoming suddenly a new, new hole in the budget, because we've moved it anticipating these savings would just go towards keeping all the city services we have right now. But any new revenues, 100% made that motion, it should be, and we should be assessing that with each mid-year financial status report. Thank you.
Mr. Caress?
Excuse me, Mr. President, is there a second to Mr. Parks's motion to refer back to Budget and Finance?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Caress?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that I, I am not in agreement with this. I think that what we've done to cut the Fire Department has been the worst of what we've done during our budget process, at least since I've been here, and I think this money should go back purely to restoring public safety services in the Fire Department, and would once again encourage support for this motion. I would be open to having this go back to committee if it had a date certain in the very near future. Otherwise, I'm fearful this would not come back out to council in a timely fashion and, and would, would miss the mark in terms of giving us a chance to restore public safety services.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Parks.
Yeah, just, just briefly, I could support that, Mr. Caress, as long as we're saying specifically what, what, where the other cuts are going to come, that are the same amount. So if we're, for instance, putting $15 million back into the Fire Department from the savings in an MOU, what are we cutting $15 million from? Because I think that's the only way we can responsibly budget around here. It is still my top priority as well, and I'll say that over and over again. And I think one of the reports we should add to that is, where are our revenues? So that when we look at what revenues we have, we can see if they are higher, to make sure they don't just get gobbled up by a general fund, but they get put in the department right away.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think also we have to think about, at the last financial, excuse me, status report, the Fire Department's over $10 million in their budget. And so that's got to be resolved. If we continue down the, excuse me, the path that we are on, we'll be over $200 million short for next year. So, any tweaking of this year's budget and removing money, like Mr. Garcetti says, you're going to have to find where it comes from. We've already cut civilians 4,000 positions. We've also cut a variety of things. So budgeting outside of the budget process is not going to be helpful to the city, and the CAO will be bringing us other financial status reports and revenue projections that would address this year. If we remember, the Fire Chief came forward and provided 300 and some odd positions cut because of the deployment schedule that they have, and that 300 positions cut was incorporated in the overall city budget. Any changing of that creates a hole somewhere, and without a corresponding dollar figure that you wish to cut, and a third department, or fourth or fifth, you just keep a hole, and the Fire Department's deficit continues to go down. So I would hope that we could, again, we will be starting budget for '12, '13, early part of next year. The mayor's put out his proposal. The mayor's budget should be coming forward to, to talk about altering this year's budget outside of the budget process, with no regard of adding the deficit to next year is not in our interest. So I'd ask again, and appreciate Mr. Garcetti's second, that this part of the MOU should go forward, but that the motion should go to committee, so that it's incorporated into financial status reports, so you get a clear picture of the impact of this request on the overall city budget.
Mr. Parks, are you willing to give a date certain for Mr. Caress's concerns, so?
Well, the thing is, is that, let me ask the CAO, when is the next financial status report? Pardon?
I think if we can do that.
It's late November.
Mr. Caress, was that satisfactory with you?
I, I missed it, so later, later, sometime in the month of, of November.
And we are in November now. So if that's satisfactory with you, maybe we can send it to committee?
I think that's fine.
Okay, so that'll be the request, the direction that'll go to committee to come back prior to the end of November. Does everyone agree with that?
In the next financial status--
Next financial status report, which is due in November. Okay, so on that item, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Very well, thank you. Next item, please.
Item 19, call special for cards.
Arnold Sax and Antonio Ramirez, number 19.
Two things on this item caught my attention. First of all, the, given the authority to utilize $1.3 million payment in lieu of taxes, in lieu of taxes? That sounds like a DWP process. Don't they make the transfer to the city in, in lieu of paying property taxes? In lieu of taxes? What would their taxes be in lieu of making a payment? We don't ever get that kind of information. You don't ever give that information to the public. And the other part of this that caught my attention is for an urgently needed regional comprehensive violence reduction strategy for the Watts community. Does that mean a new definition for the word urgently? Because I would think that urgently in the Watts community could have been any of the last 20, 25 years. There seems to be, unfortunately, an overabundance of mayhem and murder in the Watts community, and an overabundance or lack of programs, parks, and facilities in the Watts community. So I appreciate the city council in its redefining the word urgent and redefining what it means to be in lieu of property, paying taxes. And maybe sometime or other, the city council can consider having a program for the public to make payments in lieu of taxes. They could call it a tax in lieu of taxes, tax lieu, something like that. And thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez.
Good afternoon. This is backwards. Instead of, you know, I, I'm against it. $1.3 million is, is, again, no chump change, this is a lot of money. Again, you said urgently needed regional comprehensive violence reduction strategy for the Watts community? Again, if Dennis Zine and the city attorney's office would buckle up and start doing their job, and that means strategizing to reduce the crime and the violence by getting rid of the gangbangers, whether it be in the Latino communities, East L.A., and the African-American communities, you would be protecting the law-abiding citizens where you don't have to come up with $1.3 million in payment in lieu of taxes. Do your jobs, and then everything else will fall into place. Public safety, which means nothing to you, because you all live very well, which you live very well, because you have robbed it from those law-abiding citizens, including military veterans and pilots. Get off your duff and do your job. One day, payback is that you know what? It's going to come back to bite you, and you will know what it is to come by to your home and have it fully ransacked. You understand, Dennis Zine? Thanks to our Latino politicos who have done nothing but cause us great unsafe living conditions because of the bogus grants to the Latino and also in the African-American communities, these people aren't working but living rent-free, while you also are living rent-free. Dennis Zine, city attorney, Alarcon, Reyes, Weezer, and Cardenas, thank you so much for destroying public safety. Again, people like me come up here, even though you censor us all the time, we come here to tell you and remind you, stop putting bogus funds into these Latino gang-infested areas, as well as in the Black community. Support the law-abiding citizens, okay? And you won't have to pony up $1.3 million in payment in lieu of taxes. And again, get rid of the gangbangers, get rid of these politicos, and again, bring--
And thank you very much. That completes public comment on this particular item on the number 19, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, you wish to adjourn the special meeting at this time and return to the regular meeting?
Absolutely. We will do that.
Okay. Council has motions for post and referral?
Post and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Alarcon requests to be excused on November 18th for city business. A motion is required.
Motion by Mr. Parks, second by Mr. Rosenthal. It's approved.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on November 29th for city business. That meets council policy.
That is approved.
That clears the desk.
The desk is clear. It is 12:01 in Friday afternoon. Announcements for the weekend start with Mr. Rosenthal for announcements.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. On the Biona Creek, which, you know, constantly needs our support to clean up, on Saturday, November the 5th, from 9 until noon in Del Ray, the Biona Creek Bike Path, which is at the corner there of Centinela between Culver Boulevard and the 90 Freeway, the Biona Creek Renaissance is having a trash cleanup event. Volunteers of all ages are welcome for their fun and worthwhile activity, and it's a great way for students to earn community service credits. Bring your own water in a reusable container. Light refreshments, bags, gloves, and grabbers and other tools will be available. And this would be terrific if you got involved and did something about it. Again, that's Saturday, November 5th, from 9 a.m. to 12, at the corner there on Centinela, where the creek path is near Culver and the 90 Freeway. Also, quickly, on Sunday, November 6th, from 2 to 3:30, North Westdale is having a party, believe it or not, in the alley between Clarkson and National, west of Butler. The point of this is we want to organize a neighborhood to fight the uptick of crime in the neighborhood. And the point is to get to know one another and your neighbors. So if you live in that neighborhood, come on to it. The first line of, of protection is Neighborhood Watch, and this is an opportunity for you in that neighborhood to create a Neighborhood Watch. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer?
And I want to invite everyone tonight to the largest high school football game that we say western of Mississippi, but it's probably the largest in the country. Over 20,000 people are expected for a game between Roosevelt High School and Garfield High School. People from all over town and all over the country come back, families get together, it's a great rivalry, and it doesn't matter what record each team has going into this game, anything could happen, because the passion is high, there's a lot at stake, it's pride for a year to say who won at the East L.A. Classic. It will take place at the East Los Angeles Community College, 1301 Cesar Chavez Avenue in Monterey Park. Some people think it's unincorporated East L.A., it's actually Monterey Park who gerrymandered that into their city. But we also have Wilson High School homecoming game tonight versus Lincoln High School, Mr. Ed Reyes, where my Wilson High School in Council District 14 is playing your high school, Lincoln High School, for their homecoming game at Wilson High School. That's also a great rivalry. Thank you. I hope anybody watching who loves football and loves supporting youth and loves watching great competitive sports attends these games tonight.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite the public to the Annual Christian Community Center of Los Angeles Healthy Living Workshop for November 4th. It starts at 8 a.m. at 8725 South Broadway, and it, the health fair starts after a continental breakfast at 11 a.m.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Reyes?
And tomorrow, we have the Department of Aging 15th Korean Health Fair and Conference. It'll be the 15th anniversary of that, and again, this is a great way to get access to information, medicine, preventive medicine. Many of our children are suffering from obesity, at the edge, and, you know, in danger of diabetes. So how we control our diet and looking at our blood pressure and trying to do those preventive measures is very important. So I invite you to come to Good Samaritan Hospital, and it's the health fair, we're the Department of Aging, and it's, it'll be a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. I have a couple announcements in the 3rd district, San Fernando Valley. We have Revitalized Receta Annual Food Bank Drive, 9:30 to 12:30. It's going to be at the Ralphs, located at 18300 at Vanone and Reseda. Again, it's a food drive for the community, coordinated, sponsored by Revitalized Receta, Nancy Waltz Sweeney, the fine folks out there in Reseda. We also have Woodland Hills Tarzana Chamber of Commerce 12th Annual Family Festival, and that's going to take place at the intersection of Topanga and Victory. Everyone's invited to that. And we also have another event that is going to be taking place, as I keyed up here, Justice Street School on Sunday, Justice Street School Fall Festival, Justice Street School in West Hills. Everyone's invited to that. That's where Councilmember Englander graduated, okay? And Valley Village having their 40th anniversary, 11 to 3, at Valley Village on Sherman Way and De Soto. Valley Village, a great organization that helps folks in the San Fernando Valley. And also Sunday, Dia de los Muertos, Dia de los Muertos on Sherman Way at Owen's Mouth. Everyone's invited, Dia de los Muertos, which is Day of the Dead. That's going to take place on Sunday on Sherman Way, Owen's Mouth, between Topanga Canyon and east to Canoga. Everyone's invited. There's also a Congressman Brad Sherman Town Hall on Sunday, 3 o'clock, at Reseda High School. Everyone's invited to that. So a lot of events to attend this weekend. Hopefully, the rain holds out, so people can enjoy the great festivities and activities. Mr. Parks?
I forgot one announcement. The Baldwin Hill Shopping Center will have the grand opening of their new Staples Store on Saturday, the 5th, and all the public's invited, starts at 10 o'clock.
Where is that?
In the Baldwin Hill Shopping Center.
Baldwin Hill Shopping Center, that's on Crenshaw and--
Crenshaw and Keene.
Okay. Any other announcements? Seeing none, adjourning motions, colleagues? See, yes, we have adjourning motions? Please stand, we have adjourning motions, please stand. Mr. Caress, adjourning motions. Everyone in the chambers, please stand, out of respect for those that have passed away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. In October, the month that just ended, SEIU United Long-Term Care Workers lost its founding matriarch, Mrs. Verdia Daniels, who passed at the age of 80. Mrs. Daniels was a trailblazer in home care, as she dedicated her life to the noble fight of unionizing some of California's hardest-working people who every day provide life--